All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the Monday, August 7th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting into order. The first item this evening, as always, is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. As always, we invite members of the audience, if they would like to deliver an invocation and a pledge of allegiance, if there's anyone that would like to do that this evening, they may come forward to do so. Seeing no one jump up, Commissioner Beaumont, would you do that for us this evening?
I would be happy to.
Thanks, sir.
Heavenly Father, what a glorious day. Lord, what a glorious day with this family, Father, and this state and this country. Lord, I thank you for how blessed we are for the resources that we have before us, Father. I thank you for that which you provided to Currituck County. Lord, in our resources, our guests, Father, what a beautiful place to live. Lord, I thank you for the Board of Commissioners. Lord, I ask that you bless our meeting tonight with your grand wisdom as we consider the issues before us. And, Father, we are grateful that we have flexibility and we have options, Lord, because of how abundant that you bless us. Lord, I ask that you bless this meeting, Father, that you would give us wisdom as we consult, as we discuss, and vote on the issues before us, Lord. And I pray that each and every person that are here, Lord, I pray that you would watch over them as they travel home, that each would arrive safely. Lord, bless us in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to your republic for which it's changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you, Paul. Right? Sold us extra insulation. All right. Next up, we have our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from the county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything from the board? All right. Thank you. Next up is the approval of agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda tonight? Have a motion for approval, though.
Second.
Paul and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is public comment. As always, the public is invited to come to the Commissioner meeting to speak to us. They have three minutes to talk about anything that's on their minds. And I have three people signed up this evening. Connie Hedrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Connie Hedrick. I reside at 296 Summit Farms Trail. I am also a business owner in Currituck County of Real Vision's Realty Team of Currituck. And I am also the Association President of the Auburn Mall Area Association of Realtors. I signed up early for the agenda on the business taxes. I just wanted to express to you, there are a lot of small business owners that do not have an opportunity with our brick and mortars to be competitive in that workspace. I believe that there's a way to record our businesses through, as I did, through the Register of Deeds. You take your articles of incorporation with your address and you're at, and put it together. And the State Commission, Corporation Commission, can always tell us who resides and who works in our community. You'll have to forgive me. I'm not a very great oral speaker, but I do do that. So, one of the things that I really wanted to talk about is that we have close to 500 Realtors in our Auburn Mall Area Association Realtors. Not everyone has to belong to a brokerage, but many of us are sole proprietors or DBAs or LLCs. So, to be competitive in the market space, a lot of us are independents, and we are not through other brokerages, but independent brokers. And we are fair and competitive. So, I think that if you take and put a business tax or an additional fee upon those types of businesses, I think you should take a real extreme hard look at it and where that competition in the field really lies. So, as far as that, we all know, we have buyer beware state. So, if they're looking at improper zoning, they should have their commercial Realtor or their residential Realtor talk about that and do all their due diligence prior to accepting, presenting that offer or presenting that lease. So, I would hope that you would, in your work session, would really kind of table that business fee and find a way to make it work better for all types of businesses in our Currituck County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to screw this next one up. Is it Steve?
Yes.
Steve, okay. Your handwriting is as bad as mine, Steve. I'm just going to call you out on that one. Good evening. How are you today?
I tend to be infamous. That's why my handwriting is bad.
All right. There you go.
Steve Hedrick reside at 296 Summit Farms Trail here in Moyoc. I thank you guys, all you Commissioners, for getting out in front of the business licensing item that came up for discussion. I, as my wife and I are both Realtors, business owners, I pay the great state of North Carolina every year, privilege license tax of $50 just to sell a house here. So, we do pay that out. And so does any other licensed Realtor. I can't speak for everybody, but on the state website, there's a plethora of businesses licensed, you know, licensed businesses that have to pay that same privilege tax. So, just get out in front of that one. Also, listening to the discussion on access permits, I agree. I think it should be more of an access instead of parking. We usually go down to the Outer Banks and have to watch a short video on how not to run over sea turtles and the like. Take, you know, things to bring with you, like a shovel, a three-foot piece of board, so you can maybe dig yourself out. Just some common sense things, but all, every sticker that I have is registered to my truck. It has my license plate number on my sticker. So, and I know that, you know, folks who own homes down there who rent them out and they want their clients to be able to enjoy the beach as well as everybody else. If I go to Cape Hatteras and I rent a big, you know, 10-bedroom house, and I want to drive on the beach, I don't have an exclusion. I still have to purchase, you know, a seven-day permit as long as I'm going to be there. So, I think that would also be a way to track how many permits have been issued, maybe give you a better idea of who's actually going out on the beach. Whether or not it would stop people from selling them off or trying to scam it, I don't know. But that's just, that's how National Park Service operates. I know we're not National Park Service here, but that's just how they operate. So, just something to think about. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Lastly, I have Ms. Willow Kelly.
Good evening, Chairman White. Commissioners, my name is Willow Kelly. I'm the CEO of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. Prior to taking this job in 2018, I was the Government Affairs Director for both the Home Builders Association and the Outer Banks Association of Realtors for almost 13 years. During that time, we fought the good fight, so to speak, on the affordability of property insurance, which includes liability, fire insurance, wind insurance. We also looked heavily at flood insurance and made several trips to DC when it came to reauthorization of the flood insurance program and an act that passed in 2013, I believe, the Biggar Waters Act, which with the passage of that act made pretty much those folks that it was mandatory that they carry flood insurance. It made them unable to keep their mortgage payment with their property insurance, flood insurance escrowed. We saw premiums of $30,000, $50,000 annually for flood insurance at that time. And I'm here to tell you what we are hearing in the office, you should be hearing very soon. Not just with flood insurance, but also with property insurance, we are finding that one national admitted carrier at the beach with two offices, they're not renewing 1,400 policies. We were told there will be 9,000 policies east of 95 with this particular company that will not be renewed this year. The market is getting narrower and narrower to find coverage. And then with the National Flood Insurance Program reauthorization a couple of years ago with risk rating 2.0 that went into effect, that changed the way properties are rated. It seems there's no transparency in this process. And what you may find with a current owner and you are purchasing the property, when you go to closing, you can find a much higher price for insurance overall. One particular instance happened where, you know, we have due diligence here, Earnest Money in North Carolina, buyer was out of the due diligence period. So, the money they put down to purchase this house belonged to that owner. They get to closing, what was $3,500 for the current owner of the house before closing became $26,000 at closing. What that means is that buyer had to make $52,000 more to afford that mortgage in just this year. So, flood insurance is very concerning, very disconcerting to us what is happening there with risk rating 2.0. Senator Menendez out of New Jersey just introduced a bill a couple of months ago called the National Flood Insurance Reauthorization and Reform Act of 2023. I'm here before you, yes, with the PSA to folks and to you too, to check with your agent about your coverage, but also to request that you, to respectfully request that you consider adopting a resolution in support of the National Flood Insurance Reauthorization and Reform Act of 2023. This will reauthorize the program for five years. It is up for renewal on September 30th of this year. And it looks at the affordability of the program, again, placing an annual cap on premiums of 9%. The Outer Banks Association has adopted this resolution, and I would like to present it before you today for future consideration.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Get us copy. What, do you know what's going on? Why there's only one carrier? Is it a state problem not admitting?
Well, there is one national carrier. I don't want to say the name. I don't, you know, want to call anybody out. But this one particular carrier, which is a national admitted carrier, which means they're backed up if they go belly up, they have decided, and it is a business decision, to narrow the risk. And we have another carrier that we know is kind of, you want to say, cherry picking the properties that they're writing and they're not renewing others. So, there are others going to file suit. What happened with Hurricane Ian in Florida is affecting us. There was a great article in the Washington Post within the last couple of days about the dire situation in Florida, and it's just coming up the coast. And so, we do have in North Carolina the market of last resort, which is commonly referred to as the beach plan for wind and homeowners' policies. And I think we're going to see a lot more policies being put there. And we do pay a surcharge to be put into that program. It is 5% for wind and 15% for homeowners. So, we don't really want to go there. We pay the maximum rate allowed plus an additional surcharge. So, we need to be working with our insurance carriers and folks to see what we can do to remedy this situation.
Yep. I remember that. My insurance bill was 23, quote, was $23,000. I called them and said, "Well, let me know where I'm mailing the keys, because I'm just going to get bankruptcy." And they came back and said, "Oh, we magically found a policy for $2,000 a year. We'll put that on our policy."
Yeah. If you have a mortgage, you're mandated to carry it. And it's unfortunate that it could knock some people right out of their home.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we've been fighting this for 15, 20 years. I mean, there has been redlining going on with I-95 being the red line, and Willow just mentioned it. And you go 30 years ago, there was a lot of little companies that were issuing homeowner's policies in North Carolina, east of 95. They have gone out of business because they can't compete because of the way that the insurance industry has evolved. And I've had people in Moyoc tell me, and I've seen it myself. We got a letter the other day. Very few are actually writing and underwriting the business. It's going to the North Carolina Underwriters Association, and it's a beach plan type style. And we do need to get on our representatives to, that something needs to be done legislatively to treat coastal North Carolina just like any other area. There's been far more claims paid between Raleigh and Charlotte from hurricane problems than eastern North Carolina.
Right.
And that was the point I was going to bring up, is that, and again, it's something that we've been talking about for many years. And that's, they use the coast as the excuse to subsidize what's going on from Raleigh West. And they, we are paying a disproportionately high percentage of insurance because they're using the coast as the excuse. And when, in fact, west of us will regularly see more damage than we do.
The models that they use, computer models, suggest that a hurricane comes in south of Wilmington and comes right straight up the coast and devastates the entire coast past the Virginia Line. That's what they base it on.
And if I may just add, Chairman White, the North Carolina Rate Bureau just made a rate filing a week ago, and they are asking for our territory a 97.6% increase for our wind rate on dwelling policies. Now, these are those that are typically covered, our second homes, vacation rental homes, long and short-term rentals. But the public comment period is open. We'll try to get an article in the Daily Advance and the Pilot on that so that our citizens can comment on that. But I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good seeing you. It's been a while.
Yes, it has. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anyone else signed up this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name's Richard Barklow, 107 Chestnut Drive, Moyoc. I was wondering if somebody could inform me on the park at Pointer's Road, Boat Ramp, who is in charge of cleaning the, where the boats go out, the channel? Is it the county's property? Because I know the county owns part of the woods back there, but I don't know who's responsible for cleaning the water.
Are you saying it's not deep enough and needs to be dredged?
There are trees, branches, great big old logs in there now. And it's getting pretty dangerous to take a boat through it.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure.
It's not us.
It's not us.
It's not us.
Harvey? It's Harvey.
Harvey Roberts.
It's a navigable waterway.
Right. It, I don't, we can certainly look into that.
He has gotten, he's made a good point.
Maybe make us a couple of suggestions to get somebody out there.
It's getting really bad through there.
All right. We'll get somebody to take a look at that. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Don't have anyone else signed up this evening. Closed public comments, as there's no one else. Next up, we have Commissioners Report. I'll start over to my right with the, Mr. Owen Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be real short. Just remind everyone that this coming Thursday will be the ribbon cutting for, at the Moyoc Middle School and Moyoc Elementary School, expansion projects. I think it starts, what, 9:30?
Yep.
And then progresses to the, that's at the middle school, and then progresses to the elementary school at 10:30.
Selena's going to be the keynote speaker, I think.
Yeah. Looking forward to her remarks.
All right.
No pressure there.
All right. Kevin, what's on your mind this evening?
I was going to mention something about the school as well. I went by there yesterday, and I was amazed at how nice Moyoc Elementary School looks. Sussex has done, I believe Sussex had that. They've done a great job as like the public safety building and some of the other buildings, but it was very professional. You know, like I said, when you have something that's been there forever, that's an older-looking school, it blends together and it really gels. And it's amazing. You know, it's another amenity that we add to the county. Speaking of school, school starts on the 28th of August is the first day. That means school zones kick in. So, make sure you do the speed limit in school zones. And be wary for the buses. There's kids going to be out early in the morning, and it may be dark, or they may be getting dropped off. Well, they'll get dropped off in the light unless they're after school very late because it won't have daylight saving time. But like I said, it's very busy, the traffic every weekend. There's wrecks. There's, people, slow down, be safe. If you got to go somewhere, leave earlier. Like I said, it's busy times. We got a few more weeks of the traffic to the Outer Banks, and then schools will start up there. And that'll be nice to have a little bit of a rewind. So, that's pretty much it for me. Just be safe. It's going to be hot this week, too.
All right. Thank you.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have much. I just have been reminded over the last few days about how important it is to be kind and patient and to check your exasperation when someone is speaking to you and you don't like what they say. You know, we all have been in jobs where we do not necessarily want to hang out with our colleagues, but adult and mature people find a way to work together despite their differences. And sometimes you may be surprised that despite your differences, you can really solve problems. And that's what I ask and implore of people in this county, especially people who are in roles of public safety, is to put aside your differences and embrace what you each bring to the table. You know, it's not easy when people talk to you in a disrespectful manner sometimes. But reminding them with kindness that you're human and that you understand their position. People often just want to be heard, and people often just want to know that you see them. And I think that's what's important when it comes to disputes. And I ask that we find a way to solve this dispute with our EMS and our volunteer fire departments. It's important that people know that they are safe. Even if nothing's really changed, they want the perception. And I ask that cooler heads prevail. I ask that people try to find commonalities and find real solutions to make this happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do you mean someone disagreed with you as a Commissioner at some point? That hardly ever happens in this job. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Friday, July the 21st, I attended our monthly social service meeting. We were pleased to have our Clerk of Superior Court, Ray Matusco, administer the oath of office to two board members, Janet Matlosky, second term reappointment, and Kathy Jackson, first time appointment. At the meeting, we also elected our board chair, Ray Etheridge, and vice chair, Doc Johnson. Director Samantha Hurd also informed the board that the DSH Secretary Cody Kinsley has announced that DHSS is moving forward with Medicaid expansion with an anticipated start date of October the 1st, 2023. On Tuesday, July the 25th, I attended the Senior Citizen Advisory Board meeting. They have lots of fun and exciting activities for our seniors here in the county. They have planned coming up a sock hop, a wellness day, a veterans picnic, Oktoberfest. There's plans to keep you busy and active, so give the senior citizen center a call and join in the fun. And speaking of fun and staying active and excitement, on July the 11th, two of our senior citizen pickleball participants, Jerry Merritt and a, I'm going to get the last name wrong, Melick, won gold medals at the National Senior Games in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The National Senior Games participants were from 50 states, including DC and two Canadian providences. They had over 1,500 seniors participating in this event, and two Currituck people won the gold medal. So, we'd like to certainly congratulate them. So, make sure you stay active and join in all the fun that the senior citizens have available for you here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. As Commissioner McCord had mentioned, Currituck is getting ready to start their school season. Currituck Kids is, I've been a board member for many, many years, but Currituck Kids is putting together a drive for school supplies to help out students that need some help with their school supplies this year. There's multiple drop-off sites. I know we're working with Y to gather those. So, you can go to the Currituck Kids Facebook page, website, call a board member, call the Y. I mean, there's multiple, all up in that account, there's multiple places you can drop off items for school supplies. It does go a long ways. I know the students and the parents, everybody appreciate, and we take those, gather them up, and they'll drop them off. So, keep that in mind. And as far as Commissioner Jarvis had stated, yes, our first responders are here for our citizens, and our citizens expect them to be there when they need them. And again, we hope we all work together in a good manner. I mean, we're all here to help everybody. I know the sheriff dispatches, fire, EMS, you know, when we get called out, it's all for the good of the individual that needs our help. So, just keep them in your thoughts. Get to a fire, volunteer fire station, lend your support if you can. They can use it. And let's see, lastly, just remember the Health Department here that we have, I'm going to keep reiterating a few times, it is another source for your medical needs. They can provide multiple walk-in services. They do take all different, every insurance that you have, they will take and file it. It's a good resource that we have in the county, so please keep that in mind. If you need wellness checks, physicals, I know, school, anything out there, the Health Department is right next door to us, and they're running, if you need them. So, that's all I have for this evening.
On the Currituck Kids, is there a specific listed items, like on the website or something? Do you guys have something somewhere?
There'll be, yeah, there's a list of items that, you know, paper pencils, specific items, there's a list on there.
Okay.
And you can find that on the page. And if you go to one of the drop-off sites, too, they'll have information about it as well. But your basic needs, and I'm sure Selena knows what a lot of those are, too.
Chairman, or, I'm sorry, former chairman, Commissioner Payman.
Vice chair.
Yeah. And he was vice chair, too. Vice chair.
And he was in the band.
And band member, and alumni band member.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we got them all. Yeah. The Currituck Kids always did an event at the Y and stuff like that.
We're not doing it this year because it got late.
I know there's drop-off. I was just.
Yeah, no, we talked about it. We got kind of late to have that specific event. So, what we've decided to do is have multiple drop-off areas that you can take the supplies to, and they're throughout the county. I can't remember all of them off the top of my head, but if you go to the Currituck Kids Facebook page or the website, they'll list them all. Or, if you go by the Y, too, they have a big listing of it there. We'll call them, and they can tell you we're all locations. We're adding them as we speak.
Drop it off on your porch.
You can do that, too, if you'd like.
Yep.
Or my business.
All right, your business. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Just a couple of things for me tonight. The Board had a work session, which we recorded and will be up on our YouTube channel in a few days, on the Corova Parking Pacts Beast Access. So, we're going to continue to work through that and probably make changes to that in the coming year for our next tour season. And we had a lively discussion about business licenses and requiring businesses to become registered in Currituck County. And at this time, we're basically looking at doing a voluntary system. So, we'll see how that goes. And, but that discussion can be seen. Last week, myself and Ike, the county manager, took a tour through Corral and up to the 4x4 to ride around just to see things, and went into the park. Ike and I discussed a couple of things with the park. I'd like to look into jazzing that place up a little bit. It's got a pavilion that doesn't get much use, a volleyball court that probably never gets used, and a very small playground there. So, one of the things we talked about was maybe looking at the playground for a little bit more expansion of that. Can we take down the volleyball courts and do something different there? So, we just had some discussion with that. I'm sure he'll be talking with Parks and Rec about that going forward, just for the folks that live up there. folks that live up there. Over this past weekend, we had a horse that was hit and ultimately had to be put down, and it was, it was an accident. It's been all over Facebook. The Wild Horse Fund responded, and, but their vet was actually able to come up this time and go up there. So he was, she was put down up there, and that makes three this year. So if you live up there, you know they're around. Take it easy, please, driving. You know, the board and I, we discussed in our work session the fact that the roads are better up there, and that has lent to higher speeds in the four-wheel drive as we've, you know, worked diligently over the last 15 years to improve the conditions of the roads, specifically in Carova. They've gotten widened, and there's no, not as many holes anymore, so they're in much better shape. So vehicle traffic has increased, and the speeds at which people are traveling has increased. So take it easy. Remember, they don't have any eye shine at night. You can't see a horse. There's no eye shine on the beach. They're just, they're just there, just like that. So I have almost hit them myself over, you know, 12 years of living up there and driving up and down the beach. The Corral Wild Horse Fund has a new director now. Previously, they had a chief operating officer, Jo Langone. She's been before this board before, for the fund, and she's going to be retiring. And we've hired a new CEO to come in, introduced Ike to him as well last week while he was in Corrala. And I'll have him come forward to the board soon, as he, after he gets his arms around everything, and introduce himself and talk a little bit more about what the fund is up to and what direction they're going in. Of late, we've gotten a bunch of sea turtle emails from the nest folks. We understand your frustration that, you know, there's traffic out there on the beach and that a sea turtle nest was hit. You know, we've had a suggestion of putting a digital billboard to let people know that there are sea turtles out there. Well, we've got 400 signs going on the beach right now that say, don't pet the horses, don't feed the horses, don't do this, don't do that, don't park here. No one reads a dang thing, and if they do, they certainly can't understand it or don't want to. So I'm not sure that that helps. However, one of the things Commissioner McCord mentioned in our work session was redoing our video, and as we work through the beach parking pass or access pass, and maybe go in a different direction there, revamping that video so that if you get a parking pass or an access pass, you have to watch the video and understand the rules before you can actually get the pass. So we have that video out there now. It could use some refreshing. It was done probably eight years, six years ago at least. Because we put it out before we actually created the pass, just as an informational video to people. So we will look at, be looking at revamping that as well. The board of commissioners put me on the ABC board a few weeks ago. Ms. Kitty stepped down and put me on as the chair of that board. I have gone in now and met with ABC manager to sit down and talk about things. And where we're going, we have a meeting soon. And also had to take, found out Friday morning, I had to take over check signing ability. So Friday morning last week, I went in and did that so I could do payroll for them and pay their bills so we could keep our shelves full. So fully into it now, and thanks, I think, for the opportunity to do that. That's it for me this evening. Next up, we have our counter managers' report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. How about you, Ms. Megan?
Nothing either.
Okay. Well, that's quick and easy. Thank you. All right. On to new business. Item one, a sole source purchase resolution authorizing radio system upgrade and two additional channels by Motorola Solutions Incorporated.
So the North Carolina general statutes allows for a procurement exception to competitive bidding if it is a sole source. In this situation, it's when standardization or compatibility is the overriding consideration. So this contract before, or this resolution before you, excuse me, is for the radio system upgrade, which is what we already use, and it's reached its end of life, the equipment. So that is what that's for.
Okay.
So staff would recommend approval of this.
We have talked about this before. Paul, anything on a usually have something to say with Motorola?
Sorry, this has been, Mary best in the back, if we actually need high-tech assistance, but it's been something that we've known is coming, the upgrade.
Okay.
And that's just trying to ensure complete coverage.
All right.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second. Celine, you can have it.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, item two is another sole source purchase resolution. Purchase of power load fastener systems and power pro2 transport cots by Stryker Sales LLC. Much the same thing?
Yes. Again, it's a sole source, an exception to competitive bidding. Here, it's for Stryker, and it's, they're the only entity capable of providing the county with compatible power cot fastener systems and cots.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, consideration of an agreement with financial advisor for Tulsa Creek Elementary School funding.
Mr. Chairman, during budget, as we talked about the Tulsa Creek Elementary School and possible financing of that project, we were awaiting the 70% design estimate from contract design builder Sussex Construction. They did, at the end of July, come forward with a total all-in price of $60.9 million for that construction project. Of that, it appears that we will need to finance at least $58,500,000. The finance officer sent out requests for proposals from banks for installment purchase contract, but also we wanted to take a look at what the cost might be and the percentage rate for the issuance of limited obligation bonds. Limited obligation bonds do not require a vote of the people, but they do allow for a public sale and participation of the bond, in the bond market by investors, and can many times bring a lower interest rate than anticipated. You recall during the budget process that we were expecting a worst-case scenario of probably a 9% interest rate for any financing. The markets are doing better, and so first of all, we received three responses to the installment purchase contract quotes from Truist Bank, Capital One, and JP Morgan. Now, the board had talked about its preference to go with a 20-year financing with the opportunity to refinance it sometime during that term. It appears that actually a better term would be a 15-year term with the ability to refinance after the first 10 years, and that was quoted as about a 4.61% interest rate. However, we also received a quote from First Tryon Advisors, a financial advisor advising firm which has run the numbers and believes that a limited obligation bond would be to our benefit in that at a 15-year rate with a, with the ability to refinance after 10 years, we could look at a rate around 3.24%. Now, we would not know exactly what the interest rate is, obviously, until the bonds would be sold in late October, early November, but that's kind of the rate that they think that we could anticipate somewhere in that range. So based upon the amount to be paid during the life of the loan, with, which going with the limited obligation bond option would actually result in probably approximately $7 million less in principal and interest payments over the life, and with the possibility of refinancing after 10 years, although in the 3% range is a very attractive interest rate. It is staff's recommendation that the board enter into an agreement with First Tryon Advisors as our financial advisors to put together the underwriting team necessary for the issuance of limited obligation bonds, and that is a contract that is before you tonight.
And I assume that they feel confident that they could sell, sell that to someone? I mean, that's...
I mean, they certainly feel confident they can sell this, this issue on the public market. Again, they think the rate could be as low as 3.24% as of today, but again, it's going to depend upon the actual and ultimate sales.
But it wouldn't go...
It's a whole lot better than nine.
Yes.
God, yes. Big $7 million savings at least.
Is that interest tax-free like a muni bond?
It is a muni bond, yes.
Okay. At the end of 10 years, can they up the interest rate?
There is not a provision for them to increase the interest rate.
But can the market raise it?
No. But we can call or refinance after, at the 10-year period.
It's not, it's not armed, then? It's not after 10 years?
No, 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 no.
So if we decide...
We're just obligated for 10 years before we can...
Before we can refinance.
Okay.
We cannot refinance before 10 years.
Okay. Got it. All right.
We don't have to refinance if our rate is still favorable to us.
Okay. All right.
Only thing I'd like to add on the school thing, and I talked to Chairman White this week about it, and I'm going to do some legwork from now till then where we talked about the proposal. I've met with and talked with Matt Mullins, and he sent me a bunch of stuff on the speed limit, because that was my one main thing for that location, because it's a dangerous curve, school buses, there's going to be multiple entrances, where we might, in the next couple of months, go ahead and see about NC DOT putting that speed limit change in that area if a school's coming. You know, why not go ahead and get everybody used to it?
Used to it? So they slow them down to 55 for there?
Yeah, yeah. Because it is dangerous. I mean, like I said, there's, you know, there's some areas where there's some bus stops where there's some issues. And if you're going to have a school 200 yards from it, might as well get people used to.
Ike, that would just be a resolution from us to DOT to consider.
Well, I guess to do it earlier than when the school opens, although I see an email from last Friday after you'd asked the question from our design builder that there will be a school, school zone reduction to 45 miles per hour.
Would it be possible to ask DOT to do a school safety zone study, say a mile either side?
I think they did it. But we've done a traffic impact analysis study, but I guess we could, we could ask DOT to weigh in. So maybe at your next meeting, why don't we prepare a resolution for the board to adopt requesting an earlier implementation of a reduced speed.
Yeah, and given the amount of construction equipment coming and going, it wouldn't hurt them.
That's where, because they did it on Guinea Road just recently, too, but Guinea Road was always 55, and now it's 45.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Ms. Kitty? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Consent agenda. Any comments, questions, concerns, about anything in the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, we're going to go into closed session. This will conclude our regular portion of the board of commissioners' meeting. I'll move to pursue it to NCGS 143-318.11A3 in order to preserve attorney-client privileges as we go into closed session. Have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.